Today's study session on the future of the Deirdredon Station. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Menace, Horace.
President.
Cohen, Ortiz.
President.
Davis.
Here.
Yep.
Cavellis, Foley.
Here.
Ochtrach.
May.
Here.
May.
Here.
Great, thank you. Just as we jump in, I want to start by thanking the different partner agencies that have been working really closely and collaboratively through our Joint Policy Advisory Board, which is chaired by none other than Councilor Davis. I'm going to ask her to maybe help provide a little bit of context as well, but that policy board, advisory board, is made up of Caltrain, MTC, High Speed Rail, VTA, and the City of San Jose. And it's just been, I've just sat on it now, just this year, this past year, and really enjoyed seeing how the different agencies are thinking about bringing their different strengths together to help us do something that we're going to need to do in the coming years, which is significantly expand and upgrade our primary multimodal transit hub, our big station, Deirdredon Station, which is a beautiful historic station that we want to preserve, but is also frankly, a little small. And as we, we already have so many different connection points there between rail and bus, but we are planning, for those who aren't aware, we're planning for that station to go from, as I understand it, and staff will correct me, but on the order of 15,000 passenger trips a day to over 100,000 over time. And we all know, it's very exciting, we just had the inaugural ride of the electric Caltrain service, which we're super excited about. That alone, we think, will increase ridership, but then eventually BART, and we had good news from the federal government recently, all the pieces are coming together, of course, also working on the business case for an airport connector. So you can kind of see where the puck is going, to use a hockey analogy, since we're a hockey town. And where it's going is this station is going to become the most important transit hub in the South Bay and arguably in kind of Northern California, I think. And we need a station that, that can really provide a seamless experience and, and that helps facilitate transitions and the use of all those different, different services. So this is a really exciting project. We have a lot of work ahead of us. I don't want to steal any more thunder from staff, but I do want to just say that the City of San Jose is fully committed to being a good partner in this, and we're very excited about the future. And I know we're going to get into kind of what the, what the vision is, how we might fund it, governance, those sorts of things. But let me turn to the Chair of the Joint Policy Advisory Board and ask Councilor Davis to add some additional context.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been working on this project, I know Rod Deirdredon Senior always says we've been working on this project for decades, but in 2018, it really kicked off with an agreement and actual dollars put in by the partners to, to expand this station. And, and we do have a BART board member on the, on the Joint Policy Advisory Board as well, so that, and as well as ex officio member Rod Deirdredon Senior, to provide additional context for us, which is really helpful in addition to our, the named partners. You talked a little bit about Caltrain electrification. On September 21st is when Caltrain will be fully electrified from San Francisco to the Tamiyan Station. And that will give us a completely different level of service, so it will be more frequent service. In the smaller stations, it will be, it will go from one time an hour to two times an hour, so it's really doubling at the smaller stations. And of course, all of those trains will go through Deirdredon in addition to the, the enhanced peak hour service, which still exists, believe it or not, even though people, some people work from home. The, the potential of this station is really to spur economic development and housing. I did take a trip with Caltrain to Denver and look at the Denver Union Station, and that was, the way that it was put to me was, before the station was here, this was pretty much tumbleweeds. And it is now a vibrant, basically another downtown for Denver. It's a vibrant area with a lot of housing, there's hotels, there's restaurants, all kinds of retail, and it's, it's just a bustling place. And as, as we know, there's a lot of space around, around Deirdredon, and whether Google comes or not, I think having this project moving forward will spur development in that area. So I'm really looking forward to this presentation and, and all of my colleagues to be able to see all the great work that staff has been doing over the many months since the last time you presented to council. I hope I'm not stealing your thunder by saying we have achieved a 5% design, and that is a huge, huge step for us, and it's taken, you know, five or six years to get here. So thank you all for all of your work, and I'm really looking forward to the presentation.
Awesome. So thank you, Councilor Davis. Really appreciate how much energy you've put in and your vision for where we're, where we're going to go with the station. And thanks to colleagues for making the time for today's study session. So without further ado, I will turn it over to staff to get into the presentation.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, members of the public. I'm Rosalyn Huey, Deputy City Manager for Community and Economic Development, and our city team is extremely excited to provide this study session to you this morning. As you all know, there is a long history of planning and anticipated growth and development for the Deirdredon Station area. You know, this goes all the way back to 2009, when the City Council established the Deirdredon Station Area Good Neighbor Committee. And we know that while economic cycles ebb and flow and development projects evolve over time, our vision for Deirdredon is one for generations to come. And that vision as our transportation hub is one that also embraces the area as what we call a central social district for our city and for our region. So not just offering multiple modes of transportation and connectivity, but really a place where all of our residents can live, work, and gather, where small and large businesses are able to grow and thrive, and where our visitors are welcomed and have a variety of entertainment options. We see this as a place where our history and our culture are well celebrated. And we know that strong infrastructure is obviously the foundation for this development and this type of placemaking, and we look forward to continuing to work with all of our transit partners, working with PG&E, working with the Sharks, and many others. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over now to Jessica Zink, Deputy Director for Transportation, to introduce our team and continue our presentation.
Great, thank you, Rosalyn. Wonderful. Before we launch into today, I do want to introduce the team that you have here today with you. From your Department of Transportation, you have myself, as well as Ramses Madu, Division Manager, and Eric Idland, Station Planning Manager, and of course, John Risto, Director of Transportation. You also have up here to explain kind of what we're looking through today with Caltrain, Marion Lee, and Angus Campbell from Foster &amp; Partners, our architect on the project. We also have many, many partners who are here to support this project, and any questions that you have. Morgan Gally from the High Speed Rail Authority, Jason Kim from VTA, Baltasar Lopez from Caltrain, and Partner Departments as well, including our Director of the Airport and our Director of Economic Development. Consultant Jean Banker is also present, so we are here to support whatever questions you have and to seek your feedback. We are really here today, the purpose of today's study session is to share the progress that the Mayor and Councilmember Davis just shared. We have worked very hard over the last couple of years and have come to a place where we feel like we have real alternatives to share with you, make sure that those alternatives are well understood, and then ask for your help as we go out to engage our community over the coming months and year. The agenda for today starts with some of what has already been alluded to, which is the absolutely transformational potential of Deirdredon Station. Then we will spend the bulk of our time on the planning and alternatives that we've developed, and then touch on governance and funding, how we're going to deliver this project. We'll close with next steps and your questions, comments, and discussion. So as the Mayor alluded to, Deirdredon Station is going to be Northern California's primary transportation hub. It also is the seat of the most intersecting services in the Bay Area, and will have extraordinary growth both in transportation and in people, with an eightfold anticipated increase from that 15,000 to 17,000 people per day today, to more than 100,000 people. That was in fact, correct. Diving in a little closer to the overlapping many projects that are coming together physically at Deirdredon Station, I'll just highlight a few of these. The BART project coming in from the east in dark blue with the very exciting announcement of more than $5 billion in federal funding recently. The Caltrain Electrification Project in red, opening right now with celebration September 21st. The High Speed Rail Project in yellow, coming in from the Central Valley where it's under construction to meet up here with the surrounding community and the surrounding transit services, as well as key infrastructure like PG&E and key partner institutions like the SAP Center. We have definitely embarrassed Caltrain enough perhaps today, but just in case you missed it, September 21st is the day when all these electric trains will be riding from Tamiyan in San Jose up to San Francisco. Huge improvements in the passenger experience, the frequency, and how quickly you can get cleanly and quietly around our Bay Area. High Speed Rail represents another leap in that rail connectivity for California. With the High Speed Rail system, we will be able to get to the, the Central Valley, to Fresno in particular, in an hour. We will be able to get to LA in two and a half hours. This is absolutely a dramatic change in kind of the space and time of this state. And we often get asked, you know, what is going on with High Speed Rail? Well, the answer is it's under construction. So there's nearly 120 miles, shown in the orange, under construction, and the green portion shown there in the southern part of the Central Valley is actually substantially complete. The train sets are being procured for this system, and the entire stretch from San Francisco to Los Angeles is environmentally cleared. The federal government put more than $3 billion into this project, the High Speed Rail Project, to advance that construction even more quickly in the Central Valley. And we're already seeing huge returns in jobs and small business benefits, just in that early portion of work underway in the Central Valley. So today, in comparison to the future of transit at Deirdredon Station, so first, starting with the heavy rail, the intercity and commuter rail, in, in 2019, roughly the same today, there were 116 trains every day in and out of Deirdredon Station, and we are planning for nearly four times as many trains, 458 trains between Caltrain, High Speed Rail, Capital Corridor, Amtrak, Altamont Commuter Express. We also, with partners at VTA, are going to be expanding the light rail service from today's roughly 76 trains to 114 trains every day. That's 150% increase. And all of this really contributes to a huge increase, that eightfold increase that we talked about before, to more than 100,000 daily people passing through this station just for the train uses every day by 2040. This is more akin to places like SFO than it is to our train station today, but with a lot smaller footprint right here at the doorstep of our downtown. Councilmember Davis referenced Denver, and actually, this is one of the domestic models we've really been looking at throughout this process. This project, the Denver Union Station Project, really epitomizes how this is a transportation project, but also a city building project. In the late 1800s, train travel revolutionized the West, right? It took trips that had been, you know, four or five weeks from the next, next city to the east to roughly three days into a city like Denver, from Chicago and St. Louis. And then train travel did decline in those 1950s, 1960s, to the tumbleweed point discussed earlier. But the City of Denver, its partners at the Regional Transportation District there, they saw the potential impact of redeveloping and revitalizing the station. That new station opened in 2014 and has spurred, in the 50-acre surrounding, more than 2 million square feet of office, more than 3,000 new housing units just in that immediate vicinity, 800 hotel rooms, and hundreds of restaurants and new retail opportunities. This is of course, the main train station in Amsterdam, and just gives a different perspective on how you can bring so many people right to your doorstep with a relatively small footprint. That is what high-capacity train travel enables, and these are the lessons that we have been bringing into this process since 2018, when we started our cooperative agreement and partnership, that really, these are incredible transportation projects and also urban projects, that we have to work together to aim big and bold, and we have to fundamentally be people-centered in our design and focus on that seamlessness across modes. And with that, I am going to pass it over to Ramses Madu to take you through where we've been since then.
All right, thank you, Jessica. Again, Ramses Madu, Division Manager and DOT here in the city. Before I start, I did want to recognize one more of our partners who's here, Travies, Travetti from MTC, who's also been a deep partner in getting this done, getting that regional support and attention. Early on, it's really important to making these things happen, so I want to make sure that we recognize her. Mind if I grab the... All right, so I'm going to go through a little bit of history of the planning and the processes that we're going through to get to the station design. As Rosalyn already mentioned, you know, the community and the city have been deeply engaged in this area for a very long time. In 2009, we started with the Good Neighbor Committee that helped set up the framework for implementing the station and its surrounding areas. As so much of what we're going to be talking about today, this is so much more than a station. This is building neighborhoods, this is building economic activity, this is bringing new housing and, and places to be, right? And so the city really getting in and understanding how that area around the station is going to be built out is so important. So we do have an adopted Deirdredon Station Area Plan, originally adopted in 2014, and then with the, with the Downtown West Project coming in, and the need to rethink the area based on so much interest, we started up the new process in 2018 that led to the new Deirdredon Station Area Plan. That plan plans the land use around the station. You can see here, all of the area that's been planned there. We've done things like increased height limits, change zoning, really think about what the future is, as Rosalyn was saying, this is going to be a social activity area to rival any other place in the Bay Area. Alongside that, as Councilmember Davis mentioned, we started in 2018 really looking at how we're going to design the station together. Multi-agency effort started in 2018 to dig in and say, all right, what are we really doing here? What are the kinds of services that are going to come about? And how do, how might we change the station to turn it into world-class place and transit hub? That effort led us to the Deirdredon Integrated Station Concept. You may have heard of it called DISC in the past. That effort led to three insights. One, that to connect the neighborhoods, we really needed to look at how roadways and neighborhoods are connected on the, on the opposite sides of the track. We had made a gesture towards saying the tracks should be elevated to create that throughput, and we saw it as the best way to make the neighborhoods connect. The second one was two concourses. So this means that you'll have two entrances into the station, one along Santa Clara Street, and the other one near the San Fernando area, and between there and where the historic station is now. The last and very important piece was where the tracks are actually going to go. We did a lot of work, and thank you, Councilmember Davis, for helping lead that work, to get to an agreement that we would continue the tracks in their current alignment through the Gardner and North Willow Glen neighborhoods, and importantly, keep the tracks in the footprint as much as possible of the current rail alignment. Now, there's going to be a little bit more than that as we go forward, but just those were the decisions we were making. So the partners, the five agencies got together and said, okay, we have this really great concept plan, but there's a lot more work to do. How are we going to get there? What are we going to do? And we created a new workflow to get us to where we are today. What we did is we took all that work from DISC and sat down and really made sure we assessed all of the pain points, all of the parts of the station that we need to work on, all of the elements that the station work is going to impact, and developed some new alternatives, including the one from DISC, to see what are the best ways to approach this. We developed three alternatives in that, we refined those three alternatives, turned them to the three best versions of those alternatives that we could, and then as of Wednesday this week, we recommended two alternatives, which will be the focus of a lot of the conversation today. These two alternatives represent two, what we believe are viable and very good alternatives to try to get this done. We'll be taking next steps by summer next year to get us into a single option, so we can get into environmental and funding. All right. This work is led by an agreed-upon set of goals that drive all of the agencies in this. I'll just highlight a couple, right? One, passenger experience. We believe and we know that to make this successful, the experience of those using transit, as well as those using the station, needs to be constantly brought forward. Sometimes we can get lost in minutia or engineering work and all that stuff, and we can lose track of the, of the passenger experience, and we're making sure we put that up front. There are many other important ones here, including safety and transit operations, but the other one for the city perspective is that surrounding communities. We're constantly thinking about how is the station and the track work that's going to happen, along with its improvement, going to affect the neighborhoods, and we want to leave the city in a much better place than it is today with that work. With that, I'm going to pass it off to Mayor from Caltrain to talk about the different alternatives.
Great, thank you, Ramses. First, thank you for allowing me to participate with great San Jose staff here, so I feel extra special today. I will be presenting to you the two alternatives that we'd like to move forward with and discuss with the community. I do want to build on what Ramses stated, which is, the DISC vision is a wonderful vision for the Deirdredon area, and as we move forward, and we were trying to figure out, really, how can we further reduce land use impact, also being mindful about cost? How can we hold on to that vision and make improvements to the station design so that it could even be better than what was outlined in the vision? So with that said, the two alternatives, Ramses and I are going to split the presentation. I'm going to very much focus on the station itself. There's a lot of similarities, it's very, very similar between the two alternatives. And then Ramses will talk about the approaches to the station and where it differs. Okay, so this gets a little graphic, but I'm going to try to do this without a pointer. So this is the existing conditions of our Deirdredon Station. So if I start from the right side of the slide and go to left, you'll see Cahill Plaza, and then you'll see our wonderful Historic Depot, and then right next to it, you see all of the tracks and the trains, leading to the light rail, trains, and White Street, and then the buildings next to that. So this is our existing situation, and this is what we see today. I'm going to point to, I think this is going to help for the next slides. So if you look at the building right next to White Street, and you see the bottom of that building, I'm going to refer to that as the street level. You'll see, you'll see that the tracks are generally on that street level. So this is the at-grade alternative, because those tracks, as they are today, are generally at grade. You'll see it's still aligned with that bottom of that building. What you'll see is what we sort of carve out underneath the tracks, and that's going to function as the concourse area, the main area that people enter. So you go down Cahill Plaza, you'll see a little slope there. It's not that big of a slope, it'll be very gradual. You will not roll, roll down that slope, it will be ADA compliant. So you will walk along the plaza, you'll enter into that concourse area, and then you'll be able to go upstairs to access the tracks and the trains, and then you'll go downstairs to access light rail and BART, which I will describe further in a future This one is called the elevated alternative. You'll see that the floor levels are very similar, I mean, it is the same. But if you again, look at the bottom of that building next to White Street, and compare that to where the tracks are, you'll see that the tracks are now elevated, so it's higher than where it is today. You still see the concourse level below, but that's at the approximate street level. So it's more about differences in elevation, but the customer experience as they enter the station will be very similar. Okay, so we talked about the concourse level. This is where you get to walk in and kind of have the wow moment at this very beautiful future station we're envisioning. I'm going to walk you through the color scheme a little bit, so you can get oriented. So I think the most notable building is the SAP, which is at the bottom right, and that's right along Santa Clara to orient you. The station is generally shown in the blue and orange, so that blue area is where all the passengers are going to be walking around to get to either the escalator, the elevator, to go upstairs, to go to the trains, or there'll be escalators or elevators going downstairs, so you can access light rail or BART. The most exciting part, while that's very important, is the areas in orange. Those are going to be the retail areas, there'll also be some sort of back, what are we calling it, back office space? Those things, the riders will not be that excited about, but the retail areas will be restaurants, it'll be shops. You know, part of the vision that I've heard is that we want it to be a destination, not just a pass-through station. We want people to go there and meet, and really to have it be a location that you want to be at, not just to ride the train station. That could be a great byproduct. So all of those orange areas, most of it will be examined for the feasibility of a very robust retail program. And then the arrows you see there, those are all of the different ways you could really enter the station. So you can enter it from the Whole Foods side, or I should say, White Street side, enter from Santa Clara, you can enter from Cahill, but while there will be a sort of main entrance focus anchored to the historic building, there'll be many other ways to enter the station. Across Santa Clara, you will see a pinkish shaded area, so just above the SAP. That will be our bus facility and our drop-off area. We do believe that while this is a hard location, it makes sense in many ways. I believe that our team has made a deliberate priority of making the immediate areas around the station pedestrian and bike-friendly. And we felt that, of course, the bus connections are very significant, but we thought across Santa Clara would allow us to really prioritize people and bikes in the immediate station area. That bus facility will also have a direct connection that's separated from auto, so that when you're getting off the bus, or if someone's dropping you off, you don't have to necessarily cross the street, but there'll be a... to necessarily cross the street, but there'll be a bridge of some type that would allow you to enter the Deardong station directly. The yellow area is really important. It's the plaza really surrounding the station. That is another area that we want to make a public space and have the community feel very comfortable. It's a secondary area, but very integrated with the station. The peach area, which is right next to the SAP, like on the left side, that is the main entrance to the new future BART station that will be located here. So this is the concourse area. It's essentially the same for the two alternatives. I will hit a slide later that shows what happens when you go upstairs. I'll show you the platforms, but I wanted to point out here how you get downstairs. So if you can identify the dot that says light rail, so if you, light rail icon is on the left, and if you follow that dot, it leads you very close to where the historic station is. That would be where you would go downstairs to access light rail. And then if you look at, it says BSV entrance to the tunnel, and there's a BSV headhouse. So that peach entrance allows you to just walk across the plaza, and you can go from one station to the other station. But people have definitely prioritized wanting a direct connection. When you're inside the station, how do you get to BART? You have to come back out and cross the plaza and go, and no, you don't have to. So on the right side, you will see it says BSV entrance to tunnel. That is the approximate location where you will go downstairs, and you will have a direct tunnel connection to the BART system. It shaves, we estimate approximately one minute of walk time, which we think is significant for transfers, and it will make it more convenient for the riders. We did really want to thank the BART Extension Project Team. We've been working with them very diligently to figure out how to allow this tunnel connection to happen. So when you go upstairs, here are where all the rail advocates get really excited. This is where all the platforms are and where all the tracks are. So basically, from that concourse area, you go upstairs and you can see all the tracks here. It covers Caltrain and high-speed rail platforms as well as all of our legacy current operators like ACE and Capital Core and Amtrak. And for this slide, I would like to especially thank the California High-Speed Rail Authority. They worked with us really closely so that we're able to preserve most of the historic building. We're able to preserve the main hall, which is the core of the historic building, and much of the annex. Just a fun visual, we cut the roof line for you. Our consultant Angus will start to show visuals. That's a lot more exciting. But I don't know, this picture is pretty exciting for me, too. It's a possible roof line that really allows a light to permeate through the station. Right now, if you go through the station, it feels very dark when you go underneath. That is not what it's going to be. And Angus will start to show visuals of what we're seeing for that future station. So you're at the concourse and then you go downstairs. What are you able to do downstairs? You can access light rail and you can access the BART station. So the facility that's towards the top, that is the light rail station. You can see grayed out the new Deardong station beneath it to help orient you. But basically, I had mentioned that you could access the light rail station going down from the historic building location. When you go downstairs, you will hit the new located light rail station. Currently, the light rail station is not there. It's closer to White Street, but because we'll be modifying the light rail system anyway because of this project, we were able to figure out, you know, where should we really put this station? And we wanted to make it convenient for the customers and have it be more centrally located. The facility on the right side in the orange, you could see the main entrance of BART and where the platforms are. That little stub that's sticking out like a finger, that is the tunnel connection from the Deardong station where you'll be directly able to access the BART station. Going to quickly go through some visuals. Again, these are depictions based on 5% design. These are ideas. We're going to be welcoming comments from the community and all of our stakeholders. This is the at-grade alternative, and you can see the cut-out or recessed concourse. What that does is that's the historic building and it kind of gives it a grand stature because you're almost creating a second level because you're carving out underneath the station. This is the same view for the elevated alternative. You'll see that the building stays at grade. We're not doing any carve-out, but you can see right behind it that the tracks are elevated. This is a view. You're standing Santa Clara Street, kind of looking south towards Cahill. You will see on the left, that's the BART main entrance. And then right behind that, you'll see kind of a taller building. That's an envisioned development on Caltrain property. And then to the right, you again see that carved-out concourse area. You'll see that slope a little bit that people are working on. And then those tracks are really at an at-grade level. We've really carved out a concourse area underneath. Same view with elevated. You'll see that the plaza is more leveled, and then you'll see the elevated tracks. This is from, you're at Whole Foods, looking at the station. This is the at-grade. It looks like it's elevated, but it's not. That concourse is again carved out, and then you'll see the station there. And then if you can look at sort of that roof line compared to the building behind it, you can see that when it's elevated, it's just slightly taller. The other thing I wanted to point out, too, here is one of the benefits of elevating the structure. It gives us an opportunity to kind of fix Santa Clara. Right now, there's a dip that's very inconvenient for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so for the elevated, you're able to strain that out and create a more pedestrian-friendly This is inside the historic building. I really love this one because you carve out the area underneath and you are able to create sort of this grand entry to the station. This is also still beautiful, but no carve-out underneath, and it would be a very enhanced entrance with the existing Historic Depot. And with that, Angus has the more exciting part, and he's going to walk you through a simulation.
So I think while they're hooking up the movie, in effect, what we've tried to do was, as Jess and Mayor and Ramses have been explaining, we've put together a design that is the best intermodal connection between all modes of transport that actually works with both the at-grade and elevated scheme. And then really, it's a choice of whether it's at-grade or elevated, and the city, you can all make that choice. So what we've done is make a movie, if you can play it, of the at-grade scheme. So this is in effect, one of the typologies. We're making the second one so you'll be able to see it. It starts with just some, give you a little vision of what it's like arriving as a passenger inside the train station. We want the train station to be open. We've given it this triangulated roof form, taking mimicking the historic station, but in a modern way. It's 50% glass, so the, you know, the fantastic Californian sunlight can come through and flood the platforms. We've integrated it in its surroundings. Even with the at-grade scheme, we've got very shallow slopes on either side, 3%, which means we don't need any landings. It will feel like a gradual slope, and obviously, we're refining it. You see here how we've cut big slots inside the platforms to allow the natural daylight to come through the roof lights, through the platforms, and down into the concourse. A big thing we've tried to do was, other than BART and LRT, because they are below the platforms, all the other modes of transport, Caltrain, California High-Speed Rail, legacy operators, and the airport connector are all under one roof. We'd look to try and use kind of materials, timber and sustainable materials where we can to keep the carbon footprint down. What this is now going to show you is to give you the experience of as a passenger using the station. So here, you're on Cahill Plaza. You see, as Mayor was explaining, the at-grade scheme in effect creates this additional level. It kind of gives this existing station a plinth. You're still going to use the front door. It's going to become the significant gateway of the new station. You pass under the station, and you can see on either side of the main entrance, you actually have the entrances down into the light rail station, which you'll see. But by cutting a hole and creating kind of facilities up inside the station, we still have that connection with its historic components which are there. And here, you come into the central concourse flooded with natural daylight, with station and passenger facilities on either side. The appearance of coming, what it's like coming up to the platform level, heading towards the kind of the sunlight and the daylight. We think the use of the timber, the triangulation, and its connection back to the history is very important to us. And also, when you're on the platforms, if you look back towards the historic station, you can see the building in the at-grade scheme pretty much as you can today. So the arrival from the passengers arriving on the platforms is, again, similar to what it is today. And then here, if you're arriving on California High-Speed Rail, you could either have turned the opposite direction and gone down into the central concourse and into the light rail. But here, you're actually walking along the platform, coming down into the northern concourse. Straight ahead of you, you can see these big slots between the trains. This is where the drop-off would be in Santa Clara. I'm now in effect walking towards Cahill Plaza. You'll see there is this very shallow slope, but we believe that it'll kind of be imperceivable. If anyone's been to the Pompidou Center in Paris or seen it, this does something very similar. And what the slope does is it allows us to keep the tracks at the level it is today, but occupy the space under the tracks to create this vibrant retail activity which can serve food and beverage out and activate the plaza, allow us to kind of occupy the plaza with kind of public facilities, let's say. And now, as I'm coming towards the headhouse, you can see that at the ends, the north and south ends of the wing buildings, you go down. And here, we've introduced the kind of the escalators and elevators that will take you down to the relocated LRT station. And what we've been able to do is to take the slightly annoying little kink that exists there today, which will streamline the process. And then working very closely with the BSV 2 tunnel, the idea of creating this dedicated second entrance off the western end of the platform, and this is showing you what that connection would be. You would come straight up into this retail street. Here's the gate line of BART. You see this activated kind of street that connects both the north and south concourse together with station facilities, again, kind of retail, bars, restaurants, amenity stores, lounges that are there for the passengers. And then you come out into the central concourse, where the central concourse, obviously, on the left, on the eastern side, you'll have the historic station. On the western side, you have the connection to White Street. But we think with the cut slots in the platforms, they don't, they're not detrimental to the use of the platforms, but they do allow the natural daylight to come all the way into what is this kind of below-the-tracks level. And we think we'll be able to fill that full of passenger experiences, bring vegetation in there, and create kind of a very nice, naturally lit environment. And then you'll still have very good world-class kind of connections up to the platforms. And it's very important to us, I think, that all modes of transport, all the platforms we're envisaging will be at the same level, so it feels like one station rather than multiple different activities. And we've tried very hard to kind of create a kind of a state-of-the-art, world-class facility that feels of the right scale for San Jose. And, I mean, that was the end of the movie, but the model which you see in front of you, what is, when you look at it, it's got two components. Everything that is white, maybe shall I show? Shall I go? I'll do a quick demonstration. So what we, this is the, are there any, uh, so, shall I? Thank you. I don't want to walk off without the microphone. I'm sorry. The model that you see here is actually the elevated scheme. So you can see the historic station here. The ground floor level is virtually horizontal. This is the White Street entrance, and this is the LRT station underneath. So now, what I was just going to do, I'll put the microphone down. Everything. Take this piece away. What this was just illustrating was that everything that is white, which is the platforms, the facilities, the concourses, is identical in both schemes. The only real difference is the ground floor condition. So what we've done here is we've taken one entire level out. You see now, we're lower than the ground floor level of the White Street, and that gives us then the ability to slope down, create the space under the platforms. And it does allow us to put the historic station in effect on a plinth. And then the LRT station is actually under the platform. So the difference between the two, the LRT station, is one level further down. But you get the ability to integrate the station entrance in the wing buildings. While this one, it's actually a slight pavilion. With that, I'll hand back to my colleagues.
Thank you, Angus. Incredible images, and Angus and his team have really wowed us with their ability to turn the vision of this work into these images and drawings to really help us imagine what this really means. If we could have the slide deck back up at slide 40. So, okay, we've seen these beautiful images. We've seen what this can look like. Now we've got to talk a little bit about how this looks like on the ground. We're going to talk just a second about the rail envelope. The, yeah, next slide. Oh, that's mine. Okay. Let's see. Go. No. Oh, is it trying? Let's see. Looks like it's trying to do something. There we go. Okay. So here we see the track envelope. So this is the current land use taken up by the railroad infrastructure. Just to orient ourselves for a second, we have SAP Center down there on the bottom of the picture, which is to the east, and the historic station hall right there in the middle there. Now, to redesign a station, we do need to talk about how that may change over time. Now, with the DISC process, did I go to? No, okay. With the DISC process, the boundary extended, yes, I did. The boundary extended quite a bit to the east. This was because of the amount of tracks we thought we were going to need, as well as things like the platform widths that we thought we were going to want, as well as the orientation or how far north that concourse along Santa Clara Street was going to be. The team has worked very hard to pull that boundary back towards the current boundary as much as possible. Still a lot of work to be done, but this, that work is ongoing. And what we've been able to do, highlights of that work so far, dang it, it's going to go twice now. One is based on the conceptual designs that we've done. We've been able to pull the tracks back in quite a bit. In particular, as you've been able to see through all the graphics, we've been able to preserve the area around the main station hall, which also allows for a much bigger plaza in front. We've also been able to protect the area where the PG&E facility is mostly, which will allow us a much better situation when we go to figure out what we're going to do with that. We are, the tracks themselves are mostly staying within the boundary of the DISC process, north and south of the station. But there's a lot of technical work we need to do to refine that, pull it in as much as possible. You know, we, as the city, understand our role in this piece is to help protect and and the neighborhoods and communities around the tracks and make sure that that is done in the best way possible. And then, of course, the last piece we really need to figure out is there's not only the tracks and what it's eventually going to be, but its construction itself takes up space. And we have to still figure out exactly what that envelope is going to look like. All right. And those are findings that are the similarities. Now getting into differences. The station options do hold some differences, particularly grade separations and visual impacts and constructability and costs. This is a map showing the extents of where track changes will happen. This is for the elevated one. Now, we have to lift that track up, right? And to bring trains down from that elevated track takes space because you can't send tracks, trains down steep slopes. And so these, the purple bars show where the tracks from the station change would end, meaning where they would get back to grade and integrate with the current system. Again, we think there's a lot more work we can do, especially on the southern end of this, in the Gardner Willow Glen area, to hopefully rewind this a little bit and get us into a tighter impact area. The other alternative, the at-grade alternative, of course, we're not lifting the tracks as much. There will be a slight lift, it looks like. But those tracks come back to grade or back into the current system at a much faster pace. That being said, there still are impacts through the communities at these locations. These pink boxes represent where the roadways cross the stations and where we're going to have to figure out how to deal with the roadways in there. These grade separations are incredibly important for everyone involved. And from on the city side, of course, the land use impacts are incredibly important. Now, looking at the different options, the existing there on top, right? We have two at-grade, meaning autos are crossing the tracks with gates open and then the gates close when trains go through to let the trains go safely. We are assuming that all crossings will be grade separated in both scenarios. So in the at-grade, just starting from the left, West Virginia, we're looking at a potential closure for vehicles, though we would like to continue a bike and pedestrian crossing there. Azurias would have to go under and San Carlos Bridge would need to be rebuilt. The rest of the crossings are mostly the same, though I will highlight West San Fernando Street in both options would be able to go straight through the station as a two-way cycle and PED track to extend what we've already done downtown. So you'd see San Fernando basically from San Jose State all the way into the condos and townhomes area over there. Straight shot, you know, protected bikeways here and it'll be an incredible part of the project. But in the at-grade, we're looking at most of the roads going underneath the tracks, except for, of course, San Carlos where you can't because there's a creek right there. In the elevated, it's a very different scenario. All the roadways would be basically at level, the slight dips in a couple of them to give the space. But generally, the roadways would be at-grade, giving direct throughput for those. So what kind of impacts might these grade, oh, sorry, yes, the new grade separation? So why do we care about this, right? I think a lot of you already understand most of this, but grade separations are incredibly important, right? The separation improves traffic and circulation on the roadways for people biking, walking, and driving. It reduces the impact of noise in the neighborhoods. As you all know, we've been really working on quiet zones across the city because of train noise. And most importantly, I think it improves safety. We would not, it would be very hard for folks to get on the tracks. Folks wouldn't be stalling their cars or making mistakes and landing on the tracks when trains come through. And the amount of trains we're talking about going through this corridor is very, very high. And so you're also talking about, if we keep them at-grade, a lot of time when these gates are down stopping people up. They also bring a lot of challenges, right? There's a lot of land needed beyond the station footprint for those grade separations. They add a lot of construction costs, time, and just integration. All right, so what does this look like? For the at-grade option, here we have the highlights in green where we're thinking that there's going to be some potential impacts. That whole area there around Azurias is, because the Azurias Road would have to dip down, there's a lot of parcels there that their access would be affected. Exactly how we're still trying to figure out. And what the mitigations for that potential option would be are also still in works. Those are things we're going to figure out in the next phase of work, but we felt like we needed to show what we're talking about. There's also a small corner there, just on the Whole Foods Building on Stockton and Santa Clara Street. You see that little green triangle. If you follow Santa Clara Street up from SAP Centre, you see that little green triangle. You probably all know it as the Beer Garden at Whole Foods. There's a possibility that because Santa Clara Street will need to dip, continue to dip down, and will actually need to dip down further because the tracks are wider, that's, it won't come up to grade at Stockton Street fast enough to click into the current alignment, which would, which potentially would mean we'd need to realign Stockton Street and may need to take over that parcel. Again, we're just highlighting potentialities here, being open and transparent about our work. These are all things that we're going to work out in the future. For the elevated track alternative, those impacts are not there, as we talked about before, but there continue to be potential impacts in the Gardner neighborhood just as you get over 280. There's some parcels there that would see impacts because of the raised track and in particular, the construction. Okay. Last slide for me, and then we're going to talk into governance, is the cost estimates. We have very broad ranges right now because we're very early in the work. The at-grade track alternative costs quite a bit less. Why? What are the main drivers of this? It really has to do with the amount of concrete and steel that we need to bring into the work, right? They saw that very large extent of the elevated track alternative that all would need to be lifted and we'd need to bring in a lot of material to do so. And that drives a lot of the cost. And again, we're going to try to bring those down. And as we go forward, tighten up these ranges, so we do that. I did hear one really interesting thing, just to put this all in perspective, which is that the concourse C at the airport's current estimate is just about $2 billion to be built. So just kind of thinking about what these kinds of things cost, putting our minds in the frame of what it means to really do these big projects, it's another reference point for us to think about. I'm going to pass it back to Jess for the governance discussion.
Great, thank you Ramses, Mayor, and Angus. All right, last couple of sections. So as we've mentioned, we've been working as a cooperative team of five partner agencies under an agreement since 2018. And that has worked well to get us really collaborating and thinking about this as an integrated project. But it needs to improve in order to deliver this project more quickly and more effectively. So we are looking at improvements in two parallel paths. We want to keep this work going as quickly as possible, specifically into the environmental review process, starting roughly this time next year, next summer. To do that, we are recommending a strengthened organization, a project team led by a steering committee with more authority than the existing advisory board, while still looking at additional new program delivery governance organizations. So I'm going to walk very briefly through each of those. The cooperative agreement, we are proposing to strengthen, to rewrite our existing cooperative agreements, actually under legal review among all partners, with this as our new framework. A steering committee, as I mentioned, strengthening the advisory board's role and more clear roles and responsibilities for each of the partner agencies as we enter the next phase of work. While I won't belabor everybody's role in this process, I will highlight for the city that we are leading the stakeholder and community outreach and engagement processes, which we feel we have a unique ability to do, our strength within the partnership, as well as continuing to implement our area plan and the new development in the surrounding areas. For the long-term governance, we know we need a dedicated focused agency to run this project. So we've actually looked at a wide range of entities that have worked in different situations across the country and the world, a joint powers authority, a state-chartered entity, a construction authority, a development corporation. And we've also compared those to the skills and the abilities of our existing partner agencies. And to spare you the many hours that your advisory board colleagues have spent on this, we are currently recommending that we pursue a construction authority, a dedicated delivery entity that would be specifically for this purpose in terms of constructing this and then move along, right? Not a new agency for the Bay Area in perpetuity. We already have enough of those. So that is what we are proposing. There's a lot to work out in terms of details, but those will come to you as well. How we govern ourselves and organize ourselves is actually also very integrally related to how we fund this project, right? So we're thinking about these two elements together. And we wanted to emphasize a couple of things for you today. One, which is top of mind for all of our VTA board members, which is the federal match requirement, right? In a given project, we can expect anywhere between 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80% of the funding to come from a federal source. The bigger the project, the less the federal investment often. So we're trying to think through, what is it that we can bring to bear locally, from the region, from the state, that can leverage that kind of federal money that we will need to bring into the project of this magnitude? In particular, we've looked at the locally controllable options and are going to be investigating further the enhanced infrastructure financing district as a key mechanism. This is not a new tax. This is a form of tax increment financing that actually takes a portion of the growth in property taxes and dedicates it to a specific purpose. So you will be hearing more on this. Quick appreciation to Councilmember Davis, who put some funding into our city's budget last year in the currently approved budget to do this work so that the Budget Office, Finance, Economic Development, and DOT can all work together to understand the possibilities here in more detail. And the very last section, where do we go from here? Well, the first thing we are doing is really going out and making sure that our community understands the options that we're recommending to move forward. Each of these has built on our prior engagement, but we appreciate that people have had a lot to think about over the last three, four years and they're not necessarily following all the public meetings on this. So we are going to be going to where they are and having special meetings and workshops and gatherings on these alternatives so that people can get their questions answered. We are looking for you all to be ambassadors as part of that process. That is why you're essentially the first step in this community engagement work today. We have updated our website. We are continuing to meet with our community-based organizations and our stakeholders as well. And if you have any suggestions or thoughts, we appreciate them very much and we will be taking those in and then going where people want us over the coming timeframe. We do have a few already set dates, including coming up in September, at Vivecalle on September 8th. We will have a community workshop on September 12th at the Gardner Community Center. Hopefully, you will all walk out of here with the flyers for those meetings because we'd really appreciate you or your aides joining us. We'll also be celebrating Caltrain electrification with a fun pop-up that will have information about this project on September 21st. So more opportunities and more bespoke opportunities will be popping up onto our calendar and our website, but these are the key things coming up immediately. Again, this is just that advertisement for our flyer. And a sense of where the project goes from here in terms of timing. So as Mayor mentioned, we're going to be refining these alternatives up to that 10% level, incorporating the feedback that we get over the coming six to nine months and doing a lot of additional technical work that Ramses referenced as well to really have a strong sense of the full benefits, the full costs of each alternatives. And then we can bring forward a recommendation first to our steering committee and then to every agency that's part of this partnership. Because this is a consensus-driven process and it really needs to be to realize a project of this magnitude. We will then begin the environmental clearance process, which will be a combined CEQA, NEPA, state and federal environmental document. And I'm going to pass it to John for the very last slide. Thank you.
Thank you Jess, John Rista, Director of Transportation. I'm sure you are, be glad to know, this is the last slide. This is really the wrapping up of a terrific amount of work that has gone on. You see it in the slides today. And the items that are on the screen are those decision points that always come with a trigger here with where we are with the project, we now need to move it to some decision-making points. Each one of the public agencies are going to consider these three things. One of them, as Jess mentioned earlier, the cooperative agreement among the five partners. We will be bringing that back to council in the near future. As you saw through the entire slideshow, we've got recommended alternatives that are significant, both in potential impact and their differences and their similarities. And we need to make a decision as to which one we would want to take into the environmental process and to advance that engineering work to really define what it is that we have for this station. And then another very important thing is the future, how we are going to actually manage this project with that recommendation of the new governance. And then, most importantly, money and funding to be able to move this project forward. So just want to thank all of our five partner agencies again and the terrific work we've gotten from our consultants, Fosters and Partners, Mott MacDonald Engineering, and HRNA. And I just turn it back to you, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks so much, John. And thank you all for what I thought was an incredibly informative presentation. I'm really impressed with the progress that's been made. Mayor, I know you came on the team, I don't remember now how many months ago, but you've really been driving a lot of this work and just really, really impressed with how much progress. And I think consensus, it feels like folks are really aligned in where we want to go. So thank you again to everybody who contributed to the presentation today and Angus' wonderful video. It's very inspiring to be able to actually really visually feel what the new station could be like. We have time for questions and feedback and we have a number of hands. So you've definitely piqued everybody's interest here. We'll start with Councilmember Torres.
Good morning. Thank you so much for that informative presentation. By the way, I sit on the committee, so I've seen this presentation more than a few times. But that's okay because I really love the over-communication of our city staff regarding Deardong because Deardong is very, very important to the success of Silicon Valley and downtown San Jose. And so I get very, very excited with these presentations. But there's also a lot of anxiety when it comes to these presentations. I want to see this project come to fruition. And I hope I had a magic wand and could just award $10 billion to hopefully one day, the lead organization or the lead agency, after all the, after all the discussions of how we're going to finance this and how, what governing structure we're going to move forward with, which, by the way, just my two cents, I hope that the city of San Jose takes the lead on this project and is the face of this project. So, because I know, you know, VTA has Bart and Caltrain has the electrification and so forth. But I really want to see our city move forward and be the lead on this massive mega project. but I really want to see our city move forward and be the lead on this massive mega project. And so, again, with anxiety, right? I also, I have questions, especially hearing more than a few times that the neighborhood where my family grew up in, Garner, is going to be seriously impacted with this project. And so although we don't like to hear these two words, and we're not there yet on deciding if it's going to be elevated or at grade, you all know my preference. And of course, my preference is the most expensive one. But the two words are, if we move forward with, obviously, the elevated and the most expensive one, we're going to eminent domain some of those properties along the project, especially in Garner. And I'm assuming it's called the Gregory Plaza neighborhood, right? Yeah. That's where my mom lives, Councilmember Davis. No longer in Garner, it's Gregory Plaza. And of course, the Delmas Park neighborhood. Yeah.
Yeah, so I can start. Thank you very much for the feedback and the question. It might be helpful to have Slide 49 back up because it is, in fact, very complicated, right? Slide 49 speaks to what Councilmember Torres you were just asking about in terms of what are the potentially affected parcels under either of these scenarios, right? Because they differ, because they have a different physical footprint. And, oh, thank you so much. I'm sorry to run through all of those. What you will see is that at West Virginia, West Virginia, for those who haven't been over to that area, I know Councilmember Torres is frequently there, that is a very small street surrounded by homes, right? And it's a small pocket that was carved up by the presence of the freeways and the railroad over the last century. And so it is actually, while a small street, it's one where we've spent considerable attention, and we will continue to spend considerable attention because, thank you, you're almost there. Great. Because under this one exactly, what you can see, and I'll point you to the cross-section showing the elevated rail first. So what you see there is this gentle curve coming up to get to that elevation of the rail at the station, and then similarly back down to what is the maintenance facility called CMOF, the Caltrain Maintenance Facility, to the north. But going back to West Virginia, what you can see is that because we do need to connect up to the existing tracks in that area, the rail is headed back downward. And so to keep full access at West Virginia, you would need to take West Virginia itself slightly down, right? So the rail is slightly up, and the road would go slightly down. It's actually very similar to the condition today at Delmas, where the rail crosses, which is like a half up, half down. So moving our eyes up to the green potentially affected parcels, that is where we see that either during construction or even in the end state, you would potentially encroach upon those. Now, we're very far from the point of anything like eminent domain, because you asked about that as well. But as Ramses said, we wanted to be very clear-minded about what the potential effect is of either alternative as we go and further develop them and transparent with the community. Ramses said this as well, but with this and the Ozeray and/or Stockton and Alameda location, we will do whatever we can to lessen this effect, this physical conflict. But some of it is going to be these trade-offs that we have to talk through and get more information on, including opinions from the community about how they'd like to see this actually come forward.
Great. Thank you, Jessica. And you just mentioned it there at the end. So I know I like the elevated. However, this is going to be a community-led process, right? And if the community doesn't want elevated, then they don't want elevated. But we're going to take their concerns, their suggestions with this mega project seriously, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I know that there's only a few community meetings on deck, on record. I'm assuming our city is going to organize more, probably visit neighborhood associations, correct?
Absolutely. So we're going to be doing a series of pop-ups that are not yet listed because they will be, as they sound, you know, coming up into individual locations. We'll also have a survey that will, with information online, you can take the survey online, and then we'll do those intercept surveys style in different locations and on transit, et cetera. We will also be going to neighborhood associations, community meetings that are focused. Some of those we will seek to set up, and others, you know, we're really looking for you to help us understand where people who aren't directly around the infrastructure still would like to learn more, right? Because this is a citywide, regionally significant project, so we want to take that in.
Right. And someone who is strongly invested in this mega project, we're going to be able to see folks' opinions, concerns.
Yes.
Comments, of course.
Yeah. Very specifically, we will be reporting out at the November, mid-November Joint Policy Advisory Board on all the feedback that we've gotten in the September, October timeframe. But we will still be doing a lot more outreach into the new year, and so that will all be available long before there's a decision point for the steering committee or this body.
Right. And this outreach, obviously, is, we're going to be tailoring it in different languages as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Because I know, I mean, Garner.
Yes.
For those of you who don't know about Garner, Garner is a neighborhood that has seen rapid gentrification, unfortunately. It was a once, what once was a probably 80% Latino neighborhood is no longer an 80% Latino neighborhood, right? Especially with the announcement when Google said they were going to, said they were going to build, right? And so, you know, my family ended up moving from Garner into Gregory Plaza, but there's still a lot of Spanish-speaking neighbors in Garner and Gregory Plaza. So, and I might click again for the second round, but I see that the mayor's not here. But, oh, the vice mayor's here, so that makes her the mayor for a few seconds. But before I do yield the rest of my time, this is a game changer. And it's very important that the city takes a lead, right? I know that we've been discussing this for well over 20-something years, and I want to be able to see this project come to fruition before many of us in this room end up, as graphic as it sounds, dying. Because, again, we've been discussing these projects. We've been discussing BART for 20-something years. We've been discussing Caltrain for 20 years. We've been discussing high-speed rail for 20 years. And, you know, it's, as cliché as it sounds, if we build it, they will come. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. We're going to go over to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Want to thank all staff that are here today, whether you're from the city or various different organizations, for putting together this presentation. I really enjoyed the video and the vision for this project. It definitely made me excited. I can't wait. I know this is a while away from now, but I really wish it was today, because it just seems like such an exciting project, and it's really going to take our city and transportation to the next level. And, you know, it's been said that, you know, America can't do major, you know, transportation projects, and hopefully, we're able to prove them wrong with both this and, of course, you know, high-speed rail and BART expansion. So quick, just questions. You know, whenever transportation projects come up, you know, having seen, you know, transportation projects occur in my district, it just, you know, I fear for displacement, not just of residents, but also of small businesses, especially like historic small businesses. And we know that that area has a lot of history, and it's going to be a lot of economic development, not just from this, but also, as Councilmember Torres had mentioned, hopefully, Google makes good on their promise and moves in there. So just a few other questions that may be similar to Councilmember Torres is, how far is our radius for consulting neighborhoods in regards to this project? How far out do we go?
Thanks for the great question. It's quite a bit larger than we would see for most projects, right? You know, the city statutes are within so many hundred feet of a project. Obviously, this needs to go quite a bit larger. So what we're doing is we're making sure all community groups, business groups, everybody who is along the corridor is being contacted. You know, we want to make sure we're working with the community groups that are already formed, right? We're making sure that we're flyering and getting out in all the social networks that get people information as broadly as possible, right? So this is not only an engagement around the tracks and in the neighborhoods directly around there, but it's also a citywide project, right? And so we're making sure this gets out as wide as possible.
By wide as possible, like, are you going into downtown? Like, is there an example of a neighborhood that you're working with that's, I guess, outside of District 6?
So we have focused the actual location of the meeting coming up, and we will be going to each individual area of concern to meet with people there. But we would like to go wherever you all think there's interest. I know Councilmember Batra, for example, recommended some conversations coming up in District 10. We are happy to take on those conversations, right? Especially where we can be additive to things that you usually have, community conversations. We would be happy to take those suggestions and then, you know, get our staff into the different communities of the city. And I think, you know, Ramses said it very well, we also want to make sure we're touching those transit riders, those commuters who may not even live in San Jose or work in San Jose additionally.
And thank you for that, and I'm glad to hear that you're going into District 10, and that rest assures me, because that's pretty far from the station. So that's great. And I think you touched on a very important item, which is, you know, ridership isn't always the same people who live directly in there. And we know, like, there's, you know, we're keeping track of their transit centers and their frequent uses. And I know that East Ridge is a major transit hub on the east side, I think one of the largest transit hubs in the city. So it'd be great, maybe Councilmember Condellis and I could bring you guys in to do like a town hall to speak with residents over there. So I'd love to follow up with that. What sort of concerns are you hearing from residents, and I hope you're reaching out to businesses, but, and businesses, about the potential construction?
So to date, we have primarily heard a lot of excitement and certainly questions about how are you planning for construction to minimize that issue. We expect and will be looking for more granular feedback from folks as we are out over this coming timeframe, because I will say, you know, since the 2019, 2020 timeframe, we have not gotten that type of very granular feedback that helps us think about the project description and then, you know, into the environmental process and such. So I expect we'll hear more. It's been pretty high-level at this point.
That's great. I imagine that, you know, just construction disruption impacts different communities differently. Are you making an intentional outreach to local small businesses in the area?
Yes. Thus far, we have met with some of the chambers, the Downtown Association, the Alameda Business Association. Councilmember Torres has connected us, is connecting us to the ethnic chambers as well. And so, again, this is part of why we're coming to you now, because we don't want to miss anything, so other suggestions are appreciated.
Great. And is there, like, a website or a link that I could direct? Okay.
Yeah. Yes. Actually, it's on the slide, but it's also on these flyers that we'll make sure you all have, a link to the website, and there's a sign-up to learn more as well on the website.
Yeah, good. You know, when we table or, you know, do a newsletter, it'd be good to push that out to our residents to make sure, you know, as you know, even though it's not close to East Side, East Side does make a large population of riderships, so I want to make sure that , well, all residents have input on this project. You know, as we grow as a city, especially a large project like this, you know, we're going to get big city, you know, occurrences. Are we thinking about, like, you know, with the design, you know, because thinking of, like, New York, right, and their systems, you know, street vendors, you know, entertainers, you know, I think about, like, in Las Vegas, you know, on their strip, they have, like, specific sections where people can perform and stuff like that. We may see those things. Are we taking that into consideration? And if not, we could talk about that offline.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we're definitely thinking about that at a broad level at this point, right? There's, what we're, you're going to see this 100,000-square-foot plaza in front of the station. You're going to have basically a mid-sized mall-sized retail center underneath it, right? We're going to need a management group that's going to specifically manage it, you know? Is it going to be Caltrain who owns the land? Is it going to be another entity? Who's going to do it? We don't know yet. And those are the things we really need to talk about. But we know we needed to integrate into the neighborhoods and specifically bolster the community economic development that's going on there. But we have a lot, a lot, a lot more years before we get into that, the management at that level of exactly which portions will be used for what.
Okay. And finally, just a comment on the design. You know, it looks amazing at this point. You know, like I said, I love the videos. I love the renditions that have been presented. I just think that, and you said this, Jessica, it needs to be, I think you said, a human-centered or people-centered design. You know, I love modern buildings. I mean, I'm not that much of a fan of the city halls design. I think that, you know, whatever it is, it needs to be welcoming. It needs to be reflective of the culture, different populations need to feel, you know, invited in there and just, you know, sometimes, like, designs can feel less welcoming than others. And so I just want to make sure that whatever this is, it reflects the history of San Jose, the culture of our city, and is inviting to transportation. Oh, sorry. One last thing. Are we thinking about, I guess, other transportation lines from major transit hubs to Deirdre Don? Like, I know there's already ones that exist, but are we exploring, like, I don't know, maybe a fast track from East Ridge or a fast track from Valley Fair or anything like that?
So currently, you know, the other two elements that are, we've been asked to investigate by council are the Airport Connector and then the Stevens Creek Line are the two pieces. We're happy to take direction on that. We obviously need to work with VTA and everybody to kind of figure out what that would be as well, but happy to consider other things if that's what you want to put on our docket.
No, that's great. I think it just needs to be data-driven, right? I want to make sure that those with the highest, you know, transportation rates to and from there have easy access. And that'll be the end of my questions. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I just want to address the, one of the last points that you made, Councilmember Ortiz. The discussion, the movement of light rail from White to basically San Fernando will allow for better east-west and north-south connections, so there is that potential. And we've been talking to VTA, and they talked about this. I guess, Jason, I don't know if you want to weigh in on the potential for the expansion of light rail that basically wouldn't go through downtown so that it could be faster. And that's both east-west and north-south. Jason, do you want to say more about that? Does he have a mic over there, or?
You come up to this one.
Okay.
Or the public speaker.
Just want to make sure your question gets fully addressed.
All right. Good morning. Jason Kim with VTA. Yeah, so we are both looking at redesigns for the light rail that goes under the Deirdre Don Station today, as well as redesigns for the downtown light rail portion of the system. We are kind of considering lots of different options right now. I think we'll probably bring something to our board, trying to think, maybe either later this year or early next year with our conceptual designs for downtown. I guess I'll say, we generally know that downtown San Jose is like the biggest attractor for riders for our light rail system, right? Our San Jose State's probably the biggest hub for riders for our system. We also know that we want to speed up our system in various ways. So I think the light rail changes under Deirdre Don, as well as that combined with the changes to downtown that we're hoping to do, are going to really significantly speed up service for people who are not just going to downtown, but also through downtown. downtown. But yeah, so not too much to say right now, but we'll have a lot more to say probably in the near future.
Thank you. And I want to, thanks, Jason. We did talk about this at our committee meeting yesterday, and I actually talked to Carolyn about it in my one-on-one. So she's the general manager for VTA, for those of you who are listening who don't know that, about the potential expansion of light rail and maybe tying it into the expansion of Deirdre Don as a way to maybe gin up a little bit more of the federal funding because an expansion of a station doesn't necessarily expand the, doesn't necessarily expand ridership or it does, it's not looked that way by the by the Federal Transit Administration, Transportation Administration. So that's one thing that we could potentially tie in. Jason, I probably should have told you that yesterday, that I talked to Carolyn about that. So that's another thing that that we can hopefully that will tie into this. And I, we also talked a lot in the in our committee meeting yesterday at VTA, which is the SSTPNO, it's really long name, committee. But we talked about the business plan and about enhancing ridership and also enhancing the customer experience and about multimodal connectivity being really important to to be something that VTA measures so that, not just in the case of Deirdre Don, but in in all cases, so that customers have that ability to to go as quickly as possible as they can on transit, right? And especially in making the connections that they need to make to get where they need to go. So that's on my mind too, Councilmember Ortiz. And I want to be clear that every conversation that I'm having, we're having that 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 conversation. A couple of things, I I want to touch on something else that Councilmember Torres discussed, which is that West Virginia, I I belong with Councilmember Torres. I don't, I actually don't have a a horse in the race in terms of which which alignment. I'm still pretty ambivalent about the the puts and takes on the two, the at-grade versus the elevated. But I did want to ask, the West Virginia at-grade option, does it have to be close to vehicles? And and if so, why? Like, what what about that is, it makes it impossible to do a a grade separation there?
Yes, absolutely. So it is a choice, a policy choice, to have a grade separation or not at West Virginia. However, those choices do have consequences, right? So so what I would say is that, you know, with the first phase of work and the concept layout and especially keeping the tracks in the neighborhoods there, our collective, you know, commitment was to make that train and that that line a better neighbor, or at least as good of a neighbor, but a different neighbor than it was today, right? So as as train volumes increase, the current challenges of an at-grade system without that grade separation would increase, right? You'd have those gates down more often. You'd have more noise. You'd have trains that are required to to blow their horns at those crossings every time. And so it it is a choice, but it's not one we'd recommend to keep it at at grade.
Just to be clear, I'm talking about the at-grade option, but instead of closing it to vehicles at West Virginia, making it a grade separation. Is that possible? So you have that closure option, and then for the elevated option, you have a grade sub?
Thank you.
I just just want to be clear about that. So I'm I'm sure that every single person in the Gardner neighborhood and in the in the the Del Monte Park neighborhood will will want the train horns to go away and will be all in favor of grade separations. I think regardless of the regardless of the alignment, everybody will be very excited about that because I hear about it all the time with my Gregory Plaza residents. So my question was really whether Virginia has to be basically split, right? It would be close to vehicles. And so the those that are, what is it, west, would have to go out through Fuller, and those that are east would still be able to go out to Bird, which becomes Barack Obama Boulevard. The the having to go around to Fuller is is an issue because Fuller is would, people would have to turn right. And to, so basically, they would have to go south to go north. And then they would have to do what I call a Michigan left, which is they would have to do a U-turn at Co to go north. So is is there a possibility to grade sub if we do the at-grade rail?
Ramses will get into it, but there is a possibility. It would just have a very large potential footprint of impact to surrounding properties. So Ramses, please elaborate.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's just like Azuraya. You saw the amount of properties that would be affected by creating the 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 dip that would go under. The amount of properties that you're talking about gets almost out to Bird, right? And so you're you're really potentially cutting off access to a bunch of homes on both sides of there. And the amount of homes there and the stretch and the amount of use of that road all kind of add up to, at least from a from a professional opinion, that's probably not the right way to go. But it is a policy decision, right? And we will make sure that that gets brought up for everybody to consider. But it is a small, short segment of road that would have to go under the tracks. And again, when you go at those downgrade, getting back up to driveways and stuff like that, a lot of times isn't possible, right? And so that's kind of what we're balancing here.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I think it's going to be important to have that footprint available to show the community what what these options are and what all of the trade-offs are. I understand why you said close to vehicles because of the large footprint, but there is also a large footprint at Azuraya, and you're not saying that. So let's be clear about whether it's homes or businesses, how many, what that what that would mean, what the traffic would look like on the on the feeder streets, and whether there is a potential to do something different, like, I don't know, change change Bird so that there's a roundabout at Fuller so that people don't have to go all the way to Co? Or, I mean, Ramses, you already know what I feel about whether Co should have a roundabout. So there's there's the potential to also redesign Bird at the same time to make that more more, not just convenient for people, but a a better flow of traffic all around as opposed to just cutting a neighbor, another, cutting the neighborhood in half again, because it's been cut in half and it's been cut in half by the freeway. Well, first by the tracks when UP first created them, and then by the freeway, right? And now we would be doing it a third time. And this is already, as we all know, a very, a very impacted neighborhood. So just want to make sure we're really thinking through that in in a way that isn't just, okay, we're we're doing this one thing at the station, but let's think holistically about then the traffic flow on on Bird in that in that neighborhood as well. Not that I have a dog in that fight because I live there, but
You can't afford to.
It's far enough away. Believe me, I found, I figured that out my first year in office when it was a high-speed rail and the discussion at Fuller. The last question I have, oh, I'm over time, is just about whether or not we're thinking about, and I know we're only at 5% design, but whether or not we're thinking about the station design itself. I really love the idea of the glass panels, but could the non-glass panels, the opaque panels be solar panels? And we're thinking about the environmental environmental design in that in the aspect. So that's my last question.
No, and I mean, to answer the question 100%, if I didn't say it, I meant it. The solid elements of it, take advantage of the fantastic weather you have and collect that as much as we can. And we'll be looking at the carbon footprint and material choices to make it as friendly as we can, as both climatically and sustainable as we can.
Great, great points and questions. Councilmember Batra?
Thank you very much for that exciting presentation, full of all the graphics and the videos. And it certainly makes the listener to pay attention to it. And I happened to be in England when the Channel Tunnel project was done. And it brings some memories to that, the excitement of that. And I happened to be there when it was inaugurated as an expat from IBM. So and the commonality of the tracks being there, because those had railway tracks. So I think this project is not a District Six project or a small community project. It's not even a San Jose project. It is a regional project. It's a state project. It's going to have historic impact on the way a major city communicates and connects with everybody else. So I'm very impressed with the multi-agency teamwork which has produced this work today. We are a long way from finishing it, but I think the start is extremely good. It gives me confidence that we're going to end up with a great project. Okay. So wish all the good luck on that. I do have a couple of questions. One, as we, Councilmember Ortiz, when he was talking about it, brought out that there is another major project, game-changing project going on here. We didn't hear any connection with them, the Airport Connector. That are you aligning with them, keeping them in mind?
Yeah.
Because that's another billion dollars project.
Yes, absolutely. And that we appreciate Mookie being here. He's been our our partner with his his staff, working through that. So one of the great things about the timing of our our PDA, our Development Agreement with our private partners on the Airport Connector project and this work, is that we were able to connect our architectural and engineering teams together to work out different options for how the Airport Connector could integrate into the system. So a a couple of the stills, and we apologize, we we were trying to be good with time for you all, but a couple of the stills and the fly through, you can see that the Airport Connector vehicles are actually almost the closest track on that heavy rail platform, bringing people right in from the north into the station at that same level as the Caltrain and the high-speed rail trains and the other trains. So it's been a great opportunity to integrate that work.
So would they become a part of your team in terms of in the future? Or?
Yeah, well, in a sense, with the city has been representing and connecting that because we are a part of that project at this, you know, at this point. And so we are, you know, bringing the technical teams together as part of the project functionally already.
All right. Yeah, when you were making the presentation and the five agencies, that's the one which kept coming to mind, that are we ignoring them? So glad to know that you're well aligned with that. I'm going to make some comments at the 50,000 feet level, even though your elevation is not going that far. Okay, so I think this project is going to be a long-term project, which means it's going to take a long time to get it done. And the usual things with the long-term projects is the cost escalations. So in your governance and the teamwork which you're creating, please keep that in mind, that the credibility of the project goes through various phases, high excitement, acceptability and all that. And then when the cost overruns begin to happen, goes through a lot of community dissatisfaction. If you can pay attention to that phase and not have that phase in your project, that would be highly appreciated from the community standpoint and from our project standpoint. Okay. The other one we already touched on, that the communicating with the community far out, District Ten is far, but I want to have communications with our community. And you already agreed that we will have joint sessions and make our communities feedback as well as awareness and understanding, and hopefully some good suggestions to come out from there. So I appreciate that piece of it. The other one would be is, since it's going to take a long time to construct that, usually delivering the whole thing at the end is is good, but it's much better if pieces get delivered and become useful as we go along, so that the return on investment begins to show early in the life. So that would be a point to keep in mind in your design and delivery. And the the last one is, I think your engineering team seems to be on a solid ground here because of the proposals you have presented today and the level of answers you were able to provide, the degree of grade, whether we have an option or not. So I think I have a lot of confidence that you're going to have, any of the proposals you're going to bring are going to be worthy of our support. Okay? And keep up the teamwork and the engineering and all the things which you have put in place seem to be working. And I think with that one, we'll be able to support this project and make this a reality for our city and for state and and all of the people involved in there. So thanks for all the great work.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Wow, really exciting. This is really exciting to see the disc project, how Deirdre Don Station is proposed to be built out, whether it's at-grade or above grade or separate, above grade. I want to thank Jessica, you and Eric for giving me a mini briefing on this yesterday. And today was extremely informative. I want to thank all the partners who presented here, all the individuals who presented, but also the partners who were involved in this. And to Angus, I want to thank you for your visual, your video was fabulous, but I also appreciated you taking the station apart to show us what it's really, what it could conceptually look like in more than just a video. It was really helpful. So I'm really excited about this, but I didn't see the timing involved in this. I saw the timing of when it's coming to us with the next step, but what's the completion? What are we looking at? Construction starting, completion? Because as Councilmember Torres alluded to, some of us may not be around. I'm sure some of us won't be around, by the way. So if you, well, talking about age here, can you give me an idea of what timing we're talking about?
It's going to be a paragraph answer that I
That's fine.
provide. So I will start with, it is going to take a long time because it's a very big, what we call a mega project.
Yeah.
And if you look at all the mega projects that's been built around the country, it does take decades. And I will just say that out loud because I don't want to set expectations that it's going to be a five-year period. What I will provide some context is the Caltrain Electrification Project, I worked on that project. And the first time that the vision was printed on paper was in 1999, and we achieved electrification service in its 2024. I get that that's a 50-mile project, but that was also a mega project, and that was a little over $2 billion. The focus that we have for this station right now is, we have to get it over the environmental process. We have to have a real project so that we can really start to advocate for the capital funding. And so those milestones are concrete within the project team, which is, we will engage with the community thoroughly and thoughtfully over the course of a year. And our target is to start that environmental process in the summer of next year. We have given ourselves a three-year timeframe to get through that environmental process. And someone will say that sounds very long. And it is because it's a mega project. It is because it will require both federal and state environmental review and because we have five agencies involved. As we're doing that, we will start to build momentum and credibility amongst people that may want to invest in this project. And it's really the pace in which we're able to obtain funding that will let us know if we're sort of on pace with the pace of a typical mega project. Of course, we'll be working really hard to kind of beat out others. You know, this is sort of what we do to get mega projects funded. And so the faster we can get through this sort of environmental pre-planning process, we'll be much poised to compete for capital funding and hopefully do it quicker. But that quicker is when we will be a lot older with more gray hair.
I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that answer, and I understand the complexity of it in we have to relocate light rail, BART is coming in, all of this coordination, the Airport Connector, everything is connected. But you didn't give me a date, so I'm going to narrow you down a little bit. And I understand that there's a lot of question marks, that we're not at that, okay, we're breaking ground tomorrow. I understand, I completely understand that. But are we looking at 2040, 2050? Are those the timeframes we're talking about? I know it's not 2030, so I'm just trying to get an idea. So when we talk to small businesses and we talk to homeowners or property or tenants who are living in the community, that we can sort of delay their frustrations a little bit by saying, this isn't tomorrow. This is your children's children's tomorrow. Or, see what I'm trying to... When we go out to the community, they look at these presentations and they think, oh, my gosh, this is happening tomorrow. But it's not. So if they can think in terms of, okay, 2040, 2050, 2045. And I understand these projects go way out and get pushed out. You know, I'm thinking of BART coming to San Jose and how long that is. So can you give me a better idea so that when we talk to the community, we can calm their nerves a little bit right now? Because it's not imminent, it's long-term.
I feel like my colleague's going to save me. She turned on her mic, so...
Councilmember Foley, great question. And it is important, right, to communicate well with our residents and businesses, really everyone who's very much interested in this. I would say that, again, framing the timeframe about this is a decades-long project is something really important to communicate. We are planning for the next generation, right? I said that in my opening comments. I would refrain from, like, giving a date because things just evolve so much over time. But we should be transparent and share with our residents that we're talking about a decades-long project.
Thank you, Rosalyn, and I think that's the best way of framing it. This is a decades-long proposal, a decades-long project. I'm thinking of my Cambrian Park Plaza project, which is so much smaller. But we went out and got approval a couple of years ago, and those small businesses in that development are thinking, well, how much longer am I going to be here? Well, they just signed, many of them signed another two-year lease. So what we thought two years ago they were going to be breaking ground, two years ago, they're not. They're not going to be breaking ground maybe in my lifetime. I don't know. So these things get pushed out, and I understand, but to use the term decades, I really appreciate that. Man, my time is going by really quickly, so I better get out to a couple of other questions. I want to talk about Gardner a little bit. I was the school board member who represented that area for a long, long time. And I remember going there in my final year as a council member or as a school board member and leading a discussion that high-speed rail was imminent coming in to the Gardner community and how concerned they were about that. Of course, that isn't happening quickly either, but that's okay. My question, first, I want to acknowledge that the first community meeting you have is in Gardner. And I think that really sends a message to the community of how important they are to this decision. I also want to reference that there is a school there. And the work that you're talking about could potentially impact that school considerably. So as you go forward, if you haven't already, I would highly recommend that you reach out to the school district about the school and what you're thinking of as far as planning for the school. Of course, we also have a community center right over there. But make sure, please make sure that you reach out to San Jose Unified regarding Gardner. Thank you to your leadership, Councilmember Davis. I don't know who's taking on after you, but I acknowledge how much knowledge you have and have been able to lead it through to this step, and thank you for that. I remember my first presentation in 2019 and thinking, I know nothing, and Councilmember Davis knows everything. I thought, I will never get to her level on this. And I probably still won't when I'm ready to go. I want to also highlight the importance of the passenger experience, which has been mentioned many times, but also the neighborhood experience, the pedestrian experience, and the driver's experience. We want to make this a transit hub, but we want to activate it in such a way that it's so vibrant for everyone involved. And while there will be, especially during the construction, some negative impacts on the community, ultimately, it should result in improving the community and not detracting from the community. So I want to be really aware of that. And I know that every time I've talked to Jessica and Eric about this, I bring up the passenger experience and how important it is. And I will share with you, I already have shared with some, that I was in Japan recently, and the Okuyama Station was right next to the hotel I was at. And in Japan, it's a very tall country because it's very densely populated and a small landmass. But I was able to walk from my hotel to the example of Denver, walk from my hotel in a covered area through into this vibrant train station that had the Shinkansen and all the other trains leading in and out to massive restaurants, massive retail, hundreds, probably thousands of people going through daily. It was so active and exciting, and it made me think, we can do this in Deardon Station too. We just have to have the vision to do so. And I think the plans that you're looking at or you created for the architectural plans is really a good start. But then we need to make sure we really do succeed at executing on it. So with that, I'm excited to see this go forward. I know it's a long-term project, and it's just, it's really exciting to see the vision, that where we've come and where we can go as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's an incredible presentation, even though we're 5% into designing it. I want to reverberate the concern of my colleagues that we need to reach out to all 10 districts and every community because it is their tax money that's going to be invested into this project over decades. And I, you know, the estimate is $10 billion with 4% rises per year. Let's say the project is 20 years. You see the cost going up already. I'm looking at $20 billion. And I think it's important that we communicate effectively and clearly to not only the resident right now, but also our future generation. And also being very considerate of land news when we have to acquire properties and intrude upon neighborhoods with the sound of these trains. And I concur with Councilmember Foley. I was in Japan last year. And it was pretty incredible where you can access their train anywhere. It's safe, it's on time. I mean, they didn't miss 10 seconds would be a, you know, penalty. And just recently, I read an article, it was a bus or was it one of the trains? They were late 35 seconds, and they apologized to the community. And then they refund the fare to the constituent because they were late 35 seconds. And that, to me, that's incredible. And we can build the same system because California, half the constituent, we're environmentally friendly. We want to use the mass transit. But it's been too far and too long for this, you know? We built our city after 1945 based on single-family homes and lots of roads. We should have thought of, you know, the spider web with all the hub through every part to see, to bring people downtown, not only for job entertainment and everything else. But I am extremely, the vision is grand and it's bold, and I love it. And I have to concur with Councilmember Torres, the elevation that reduced the noise and impact upon the road because we're using every possible transit, right? The road, the BART, the train, the electric train, the bullet train, everything to move people efficiently throughout the city. And I look forward to see this in my lifetime to come to fruition. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you for all the great questions and comments. I want to thank the staff and the partners so very much. I also would like to thank Councilmember Davis because you have had all these discussions, all of these things. And, you know, we are the beneficiaries of a lot of really, you know, thoughtful work and all of that. So thank you so much. My question has to do with what you mentioned in terms of further consideration of having more authority. I kind of wanted to know a little bit more about what does that mean and when do you decide?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So as I mentioned, the partner agencies recognize the need to have a dedicated focused entity whose charge it is to deliver this project, right? So we see that. We also have done enough work on the different models and what goes into actually creating them, the contractual agreements, et cetera, to recognize that setting up that authority, we do expect to take some time. And we don't want to lose momentum on the station project and the work in that timeframe. So I think what you're asking about, Vice Mayor Kame, is, you know, what is that strengthening that we're doing in the meantime? And that will be in the cooperative agreement that we bring to you actually very soon, in just a couple of months. And what we're doing there is twofold. Really, it's establishing that we will have a steering committee with specific authorities that helps us drive this project more quickly and with more quick communication from our elected leaders to the project team, right? That's number one. We also will have those different roles and responsibilities. And each agency is establishing the teams that they need to carry out that work, right? So I mentioned that the city is taking on the community engagement and outreach. And we have actually brought on Kim Lee Horn to support staff because it's a lot to do, right, to go to all 10 districts and more, right? Which we're going to be doing over this timeframe. So the key things for, to answer your question, is that this steering committee is going to be charged with really getting in there, kind of in the way you've seen Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Torres, Mayor Mahan kind of allude to already, but with the ability to direct us, say, on things like our outreach and communications plan. There is a big caveat, though, which is that while we're in this steering committee format, we will still take the absolutely major decisions to each of our boards in accordance with our agency's policies, right? Because while the steering committee will have that authority to guide, they are not an entity with their own kind of, you know, legal authority and such. And so that really means that the city, Caltrain, MTC, VTA, and High-Speed Rail, we all need to express that we're on board for these major decisions like the station alternative, like that long-term governance framework. So you will still see that as one of the key authorizing bodies for that work.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for that. I don't see any other hands at the moment. This has been quite informative. I love the visuals. I'm a very visual person, so the flyover was just great. Tony, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, so we do not have any public comment. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and the meeting is adjourned.